This is just another work session in a series to go over all of the budget. I invited the principals earlier this summer just to give a short recap of how the EAC money impacts their schools, because I know that everybody wanted to know that, and I don't think there's enough time to really go over every detail, because it has been extremely impactful, honestly, with the very little they get per school. So that's how we're going to start off with some of their slide shows, and then we're going to go into Richard with Operation, and Richard with Public Works. We're going to go over facilities and the five-year plan for infrastructure. A lot of the stuff that's in the budget, in the budget book, line-by-line items, we can go through that at the end to go over questions, but I felt like these were better presented, you know, during work session, so. And when they finish, I'm going to just do a recap of what they're going to go over before both Richards start, so.
Okay.
Thank you all for coming.
Sure. Principals, we are very glad to have you guys with us, and I won't take up much of your time, because I know that you all want to get in and get out. We're very glad to have you here. We know it's hard to get all four of you in the same spot at the same time, so, welcome, and go ahead.
Okay. Well, I'm Patrice Wall from J. Larry Newton School, and first, I just want to thank all of the council members for their support of our schools, and their financial support, and all the support that you give the community. I have about 700 students at J. Larry Newton School that you help support, and today I have with me my instructional coach, Laura Ruth Hunter, and she's just going to share a little bit with you about how the city funds help support our school.
That's right here is good.
Sure, that's perfect.
So, the city funds help fund me, actually, as the instru-
I was going to say, so everybody can hear you in live stream also.
Great. So, the city actually funds my position as the instructional coach for math and science. I actually worked for the State Department with the Alabama Math and Science Technology Initiative for four years, and when Fairhope provided Newton with these funds, I was able to come back to my home school where I taught as the instructional coach there. So, just a few things that impact our school with this funding is, I'm able to provide the teachers with professional development, including O-GAP training, which is out of Vermont, which is helping students move forward in multiplication and addition strategies. I'm also able to spend most of my time coaching teachers, so I'm one-on-one with the teachers in their classrooms with students, helping them with their pedagogy and improving their practice, as well as moving the students forward. And I actually get to work with all of our new teachers, and then I get to work with our not-new teachers as much as I can. And then curriculum mapping, where I get to work with teachers to help them pace and thinking about pacing and assessing, once again focused on student improvement. And I also support teachers in our science lab, where our students get to have hands-on exploration every week. With working with students, I get to help one-on-one with students with their strategies, and I also get to help with intervention. So, I support our interventionist on how to best meet student needs, and I get, last year, we had our first J. Larry Newton Science Fair, and so I was able to take the lead in that, and we got great feedback from students and parents on that. And so, that's something that wasn't really possible before I had my position there. I also get to work with families. So, we have Am Style Literacy Night that I co-lead, where the families come in and they get to go to the classrooms and see what happens in math and science and literacy. And this year, we're taking on an endeavor to actually create videos for families, so families can, we'll post them on our Facebook and our page, and our webpage, so parents can actually see and help their students with these strategies that are new to them. And we are working on having students create those videos too, to create some leadership abilities, and all of that would be hard for a classroom teacher to do, so I'm able to support that. And finally, I'm able to work with administration to just help use the data to make decisions, because we know that that's how we make our best decisions, and I also work on the leadership team in our school with the Seven Habits of Happy Kids.
Yes, love that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let's see, it might be about this. How do we get to the next presentation? What is that one titled?
We have all the school finances.
Okay. There it is. You see it? Yeah.
There we go.
Okay, great. Good job.
Thank you, Jeff.
Julie Pierce, Fairhope Elementary School. Local school finances and instructional improvement. This is our report card, and you see there, we made a 78.8. That's a C for Fairhope Elementary School, and we're not proud of that. If you see the small print on the bottom-right corner, we actually made an A in math, and we made a D in reading, and that was based on test scores from two years ago. Not acceptable. So, we all went around. We said, "Well, are we going to fix this?" We met with the EAC, we met with parents, we met with teachers, we met with administrators, we met with Baldwin County Board of Education, I met with FIF, we met with PTC, and we all said, "We've got a problem, we need to fix it." And so, as a result, we are now one of the top 50 in the state of Alabama, based on the test achievements, test scores last year, because they've improved so much. That's huge. It is a $20,000 check that we're going to receive on Thursday from the state government. I have never heard of them giving money away for academic achievement, but I want you to know the part that you played in that. Let me go through some of this. To run a school, it doesn't just get paid for by the Board of Education in the state, it takes a lot of effort on a lot of people's part. So, with fundraising, Fairhope Elementary School, not this year, but, well, 17, 18th school year, raised about $155,000. If you look under federal funding, we don't get any money from the federal government, because to get money from the federal government, you have to have a free and reduced population rate of 40% or higher. So, at the last school that I was at, same size as Fairhope Elementary School, we would raise about $75,000 in the community of Gulf Shores, and we received a check for about $225,000 from the federal government. So, you can see the difference of how important fundraising becomes for a community. On the left-hand side, you'll see that the bulk of the money comes from both grants, and both comes from fundraising, and then in the pie chart on the right, you will see, this is what I anticipate in the future. So, fundraising is getting more important, as you can see, now it's over almost half of the pie chart at this point. So, you're wondering, "Well, Julie, what are you doing to raise money?" Well, you see, our silent auction and our Booster-Thon are our two most important fundraisers in addition to sponsorships. There's a large yellow, or a larger yellow slice at the top-right corner, and those are just sheer donations from parents. In the meantime, we sell t-shirts, we sell school pictures, we sell yearbook, we rent out our gym, we rent out our cafeteria, we sell cookies and crackers, and we sell Kona ice, and we sell chocolate bars, and that was the breakout last year. This is the breakout this year, and it pretty much remains the same. We're going to rely on the silent auction, the Booster-Thon, and sponsorships was our main fundraisers. But if you'll notice, the green piece gets a little larger for canteen, because this year, I decided I needed to sell ice cream, because I need more money. So, we're not selling chocolate bars, we're going to sell ice cream. We're doing everything we can to raise money. On the left-hand side, you say, "Well, where do you get your grants from?" Well, pretty much last year, for the 17, 18th school year, it was pretty evenly divided. You can see, FIF, $22,000, WISA money, $22,000, the PTC, $21,000. Tripp Pittman gave us a one-time contribution of $35,000 to fund Leader and Me, and then you see the Fairhope City Council, EAC, which was about $15,000 last year. The pie graph on the right, this is what I anticipate for next year, and Fairhope City Council, you are half of that pie chart. You are half of that pie chart. $70,000, and then FIF is at 27, WISA at 22.5, anticipate, and PTC at 21,000. So, you can see how important your fundraising is to our school system, and I just wanted to let you know that the vast majority of my time at school is spent raising money. I would love it if the vast majority of my time could be spent teaching kids and teaching teachers to teach. That would be my wish, and I so hope that you guys understand that when you gave us that 300 and whatever thousand dollars it was, the first summer I was here, the principals graciously let Fairhope Elementary School have 110,000 of that. We purchased, with your money, two bookrooms, tons of books for classrooms, two professional developments for every teacher in the building, and you didn't just do that for my school, but you did that for Fairhope Intermediate and for J. Larry Newton School, and so now you can see the results. So, I keep trying to tell you guys, you're making a difference, and you are making a difference. Thank you so much for supporting us. Don't stop.
Thank you so, so much, and I think this is perfect, that, you know, all the schools work with each other on, you know, some schools get a little bit more one year, some get a little bit less, but overall, the amount of money that is going, I mean, I can't say enough about how much this is impacting our schools, and if you want someone to be very frugal and work with the money at the best ability, then give it to a teacher, because they're the best ones to do it. I firmly believe that. So, and we're going to go to the next presentation.
Mine's good old-fashioned stuff. But I come to you, I'm Carol Broughton, Fairhope Intermediate, and I come to you with gratitude, because so many good things are happening in our community, and it's supported by every aspect of it. The first page defines our drive, everything we do, and this is the state formula for foundation units. Standalone intermediate schools have the greatest challenge. I always tell my teachers, "We do more with less than most do with more," and that is the truth. We don't ask for much, we do focus on the instruction of it. But here's the nuts and bolts. Out of this, you see, I highlighted the center, it's because the four to six grades have the highest ratio between teachers and students. So, my classrooms are larger. They are by nature, the state defines, that's acceptable. So, that's our driving force, which is where you come in to rescue us. What we did with your money last year was hire a reading intervention teacher. Now, the state of Alabama also does not fund reading coaches at the upper elementary, so locally, the county has given me a half a unit, a half of a reading coach, two and a half days, to be precise, for the past three years. This year, they finally locally funded the other half of it, so I have a full-time reading coach for the very first time. Y'all, I feel like doing the happy dance right in front of everybody, because it was wonderful. And then you guys stepped in with a reading intervention. Now, here's the difference, the reading intervention teacher is able to pull those lower kids that just missed a foundational brick somewhere along the way, and so we really work hard, and it shows in our data, that we pulled levels one and two up to three and four by about 15%. So, we are really, really excited with the course that we're on. Lot of good things happening if we ever go to the K6, which Mr. Tyler says will happen next year. I hope that's right, because then we get smarter with our teacher units. I get more teacher units. Do you, without the FIF, my science labs would be empty. Without you guys, I would not have a reading interventionist. So, it's critical to me, my story's a little bit different, but we're blowing and going at Fairhope Intermediate School, and I'd love to see you if you ever have a minute to come by. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Good afternoon. I'm Tonia Harrelson, Assistant Principal at Fairhope Middle, and I want to start by saying how appreciative our faculty and staff is at Fairhope Middle for your financial support. Our students and our parents are so grateful. So, I want to tell you how your money has been spent at Fairhope Middle. Ms. Hall, our principal, really feels strongly about putting money in professional development and personnel, and so we started with professional development, and we sent teachers in all four of our core subjects, reading, math, science, and history, to different conferences, where they learned teaching strategies and how to become a more effective teacher, so that they could go back and sit down in grade levels and departmental and share with others what they've learned, and then they came up with teaching strategies, reading strategies that could be used across the board in every classroom, to even include PE, and our bus drivers jumped in, and bus drivers are helping out as well. So, we really appreciate that professional development, because we're learning from the best in the nation, and we're bringing it back to our school. What we're most proud of is, we were able to fund a unit last year, an intervention unit, in the area of math, and our school is taking, like the other schools, our Scantron Performance and Scantron Achievement Series, and there's a level called Benchmark that the county and the state is saying, "Students need to score right here," and we call that benchmarking, that they've mastered the goals or mastered the skills in reading and math for their grade level. And so, we want every student, we want to have 100% of our students benchmark, that's the goal, but we looked at our students who did not benchmark, they scored, as Ms. Broughton mentioned, a level one or two, and so we pulled those students, and so instead of those students having an enrichment of their choice, they were put in this math intervention, so they had math intervention with the math teacher that your money funded, and then they also had math class with the regular math teacher. So, out of the students that participated in that intervention class, remember, these kids had not benchmarked the year before. After the year progressed, and we took the Scantron in spring, 66.79% of those students benchmarked. That is phenomenal for those students, and when those students, all of a sudden, they're in math class, and they understand what's going on, and they're able to complete their homework, they get so excited, and success breeds success. And so, your funds help these students gain the self-confidence they need, because maybe they've heard at home, "Well, I wasn't good at math either, and it's okay," and then at school, we're telling them, "Yes, you can do this, this is possible," and so for the first time, they're seeing that. So, 66.79% of those students benchmarked. The other 33.21%, every single one of them showed positive growth. Many were just right there, a point or two away from benchmarking, and so parents were calling, students were saying, "Can we please have this class again?" And so, they're hungry for that, because they see for the first time, "It is possible for me to catch up with my peers," and so your money funded that unit, and we so appreciate that. Our test scores show that students are mastering those reading skills and those math skills, and we just thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and for our students. I wish that you were there to see the smile on their faces when they can participate and they get those scores back, and they see that they benchmarked, and they did as well as their peers, so, thank you.
Thank you. The real thank you is to y'all and what you do for our kids. Just in closing for this recap, I think we really need to move towards, you know, something consistent that our schools can count on, so they can do long-term planning. You know, right now, we have been able to be a little bit consistent, but it seems like it's always up in the air for an approval, when really, to do proper planning, there needs to be something in place, and anything over this, you know, hey, it's great, and it's gravy, but to have an amount that we can, you know, let them know that they can always work together with this amount, I think is very important, and something that we should start soon.
I was going to just add to that, that if all goes as we hope with the K1 Center purchase, part of that acquisition was not cash upfront, but it was an agreement to fund the EAC for a five-year period beyond that, so that would be a step in the right direction of setting a consistent, we're committing to a five-year funding of this at this level, and that was going to count towards the purchase, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, and I want to thank you all again for being here. As far as, you know, financial requests that we get-
Y'all very much.
Counsel, I want to take it a step further. You know, y'all, I think all of y'all were at the meeting at the library with the EAC a month or so ago, two months ago, you know, discussing the special tax district. What these ladies just discussed is a great example of why we need to push for that special tax district to get more funding to the schools, just a little bit we do. That's proven results. Imagine if we tripled that on an annual basis, and everybody that goes to the Fairhope Peter Pattern, Annie's up and pays a little bit more to help fund these schools. So, that's not dead, that's still, the EAC's going to be gaining some traction on that.
Wonderful. I appreciate you all taking the time to do this.
Thank y'all.
It looks like y'all are all getting out of boy, but is it y'all getting out of burp?
That's all right.
That's right.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all, really.
Thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As we continue the budget process, I'm going to invite Richard and Richard up. We had a schedule that y'all saw, and we had to cancel one of the special meetings due to Tropical Storm Gordon, and I would like to reschedule that. I'll work with Lisa, who can get with y'all to see what day works best for your schedule, to make that edit. We have, just going through this before they speak today, because this was kind of in the overall presentation, but we have started the utility upgrades, and in this budget, there's a five-year plan. There was a three-year plan in 2018 that was not as detailed, but we knew approximately how much we would be spending that year, and when you're dealing with, I must consider it like a remodel, you really never know exactly how much you're going to spend, but what we can do is estimate what the first year will be, and he's going to go into detail about that. And the utility rates and fee increase that was in 2018 budget is, again, in the 2019 budget, even though the total amount for this five-year project is much higher. We've had more time to really drill down what's needed and put it on really a longer-term plan, so that we know that we can get this done. So, the rate increase and fee structure is basically the same, even though the price tag is higher. We did decrease the rate fee for the irrigation, though, because when we did sample billings, which we'll have in your packets, that kind of skewed, it made it seem higher because of that one. Not everybody has irrigation, but that did seem to make it a lot higher. But when you look at the sample billing for every one of them, you'll see that this is not a big change, but I do think it's a change that needs to happen, because it's not even completely offsetting what needs to be done in the next five years, and we haven't had an increase in eight. The other item, sorry, I left my notes here. The city owns many, many buildings, and we actually own over 100. All really have not been on a maintenance plan, they have been, you know, as emergencies come up, we try to figure out how to pay for it, and as y'all know, it's been very reactionary. We do want to start looking at all of our facilities in a way of an order of priority, what we need immediately, and one of the things we need immediately is office space. The office space that we have right now, we are out at City Hall and at the warehouse, but it's very inefficient layout, and I think we have an opportunity with everybody's help to look at this, to look at the pecan building as a way that we could maybe gut it, start from scratch, and really consolidate a lot of services. We're only going to need more hires, and right now, if we hired anyone, they would have to work in the hallway or share an office space. Again, it's just, we're being very reactionary right now, and I don't think we can wait any longer on a plan for this. So, we're going to go over a little bit of that today, and I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you for setting that up, Mayor, and thank you, Counsel, for taking time. I'm going to be brief, and just kind of give you an overview of our current facility challenges as well as some opportunities. You know, right now, at the facility at 555 South Section Street, that currently houses public works, the utilities, which includes gas, water, sewer, and electric. We've got planning and zoning in that facility, we've got the building department, we have purchasing, we have community and economic development, roughly two-thirds of IT is housed there, as well as the metering has been relocated to the purchasing building. We've got a pretty good group of city representation of operational departments there. We're also trying to house one of the HR people, since we, the majority of the personnel issues occur down there because of those departments. That represents, what, over 66% of the city's employees, and having that connection to HR is a positive thing. Just to kind of give you a comparable, if you think about our city to the north and the facilities they have to accommodate the same things, you know, Daphne's Public Works building is almost the same size as the building that everything is housed in right now. Look at Riviera, they have an administrative building in Whispering Pines, and they have a large facility on American Way that has offices for operations and laydowns and things of that nature. Then look at Daphne Utilities, they have the central service facility on Well Road, they have the administrative office on Daphne Avenue, as well as they have offices at their wastewater treatment plant. They're doing the same functions in those facilities as we're trying to do at the facility we have, and we have run out of space. Right now, our solution to the problem is office sharing. That's been a little tough on morale, when somebody's had an office to themselves for 10, 12, 13, 14 years, and all of a sudden, they've got a bunkmate, they kind of take that, take it personally. And right now, we have some as many as three people in an office, and in the case of public works, we have an assistant director and three, yes, three supervisors working off of, really, if you can call an office, it's a slightly improved area of a maintenance barn that has air conditioning in it. Our building maintenance supervisor does not have an office, it's the seat of his truck, and luckily, he has a smartphone, so he can get his work orders and things of that nature. One of the things that we're doing is a short-term, as you know, in that facility, the southeast corner of that building is an unfinished storage area. We are doing that in-house to get it to a finished date, and it's going to house six cubicles, just because of the fact that we have an opportunity through the University of South Alabama to get some interns for free that can do a bunch of work for us, but we don't have a desk to sit them at at this point in time, and that's part of that solution, as well as those people that have been sharing an office are going to get moved to a cubicle area, because HR has to have an office that, when it's a sensitive subject, that the door can be closed and handled that way, and it can't be done in a cubicle setting. The other challenge we have is the public comes into that facility, because they conduct whether building permitting or planning and zoning permitting or interactions of such, the building is not ADA compliant. One day, we're going to have to address that, and not a single restroom is compliant to ADA standards. So, that brought this discussion internally and with the mayor, is what is the most logical route? Well, right adjacent to the facility, we do own the pecan building, and right now, it has 10,000 square foot of heated and cooled space that has a new air conditioning system in it, or at least components of it are, and it's attached to almost unlimited warehouse space that could be expanded into it as time demanded. There are some challenges, and I don't mean to, I don't want to undersell this. You know, the biggest question is, is can the current building envelope meet current building code? Now, the good news is, that building is made of three, up of three connected pre-engineered metal buildings that the Ludwig Company produced. They said if we can get them the builder stamp off of any of the frames, they can actually pull the original design documents, structural documents, and that would be a starting point to see if it, one, would meet current code, or what would have to be done to the actual skeleton and frame to meet the wind code and things of that nature. I think the other big challenge is that office space is very outdated, and if you hadn't taken a tour of it, it's kind of like a funhouse. If you hadn't been in there, it's pretty neat, because there's offices to connect to other offices, and then there's a hallway, and then there's magically a bathroom. It was very organic when that space was laid out, and it has that lovely 1970s mobile home paneling all throughout it, so it's a little bit dated, and it's poorly laid out to function as usable space today. And I think the greatest challenge is that when you're looking at a remodel is cost controls. As we know, with the library, a simple task of getting the envelope to stop leaking went from what would be a half million, $450,000, to ultimately $1.1 million. Those, that is always a concern. I know that Richard has in the budget proposal, $2 million to turn that into usable office space, and I think the one thing we'd have to commit to you is that if that's the budget, then we have to figure out what we can, you know, how much office space we can deliver for that. But I think the opportunities is, one, we realize that office today is not what- from what would be a half million, $450,000 to ultimately $1.1 million. That is always a concern. I know that Richard has in the budget proposal, $2 million to turn that into usable office space and I think the one thing we'd have to commit to you is that if that's the budget, then we have to figure out what we can, you know, how much office space we can deliver for that. But I think the opportunities is one, we realize that office today is not what office of my generation or Richard's generation grew up with. We're talking about collaborative space, meaning a lot less offices, but collaborative areas where you have a bullpen, so to speak, that has cubicles that join each other and so public works would, the supervisors would be in a cubicle cluster. There may be one or two private offices for those times that you need and then a small meeting space that you could house all those folks in a lot smaller square footage than if you had to build everybody an office with walls and that were 12 by 12 or whatever. And you've all seen those workspaces. Now, I will tell you, the architects already told us that cubicles aren't much less expensive than traditional walls, but you get more workable, usable space when you do it that way. The other thing that is our goal is kind of that true one-stop citizen services. You know, a lobby that is arranged where there's TNZ, there's building permits, there's metering, there's public work sanitation, so if a citizen comes in, they're not getting walked throughout the building to get their needs, that there is a reception area that is connected to all of the service centers and there is really a much more ease of interaction and a better customer service in that thing. So, and I think the other big benefit about the Pecan Building is those attached warehouses that we really underutilize. I mean, we use it for recycling, but most of it is just used for storage of things that because we had space to store them, we stored them. And now through government deals, we're finding it's a much better thing that if we haven't touched an item in six years, it probably needs to be surplus and turned into an asset, into a liability. We have a potential for unlimited growth into that building, meaning that there would, you know, if this city could be served out of that facility if planned accordingly for a very, very, very long time. So that's kind of the situation. It's tough when we know we have a hire coming in or whatever and we're scrambling to find a place to put them. And there was a rumor that an HR person worked off of file cabinet for almost two weeks before they had a desk to sit at, so, excuse me. And that's just, we don't want to do that to our employees and unfortunately with Munis and the work order systems, those supervisors have had to have a place to sit down with a computer access where they can process and update and close out and do those things. So there is a need for a workstation, not necessarily an office, but a place that's theirs that has the computer and a phone that they can do those administrative duties that they need to do. So that's kind of our thought process. I'm personally always terrified of a remodel because it's one of those things once you get into, there tends to be project creep, but we've got to start at least having a conversation about where we go from here because it's not going to be very long before we talk to you about renting temporary work trailers to put out in the parking lot because we are literally running out of space.
Yeah, and one other thing that we came to, you know, I mean, we knew going into storm preparation that we were going to expect key personnel to report back as soon as we could and then there was a discussion about should key personnel stay on site and respond from the site. Well, it's hard to tell somebody to stay somewhere that's really not rated for the type of wind that you can experience in a hurricane. And so a safe room would be part of what we would do in this facility and it would be one that we would be able to use when it's not in storm mode. You know, it may be a computer lab or it may be an office or it may be a school-type setting for continuing education. So we think that's important in the process of trying to get a facility, you know, that's going to last for a long time to be, you know, set up with that capability. $2 million, I will tell you, was just an estimate at best and it really wasn't a whole lot of thought that went into it. We did some renovations at Riviera and some of the price tags that I tried to consider equal spacing and I know there's been some changes in cost. I mean, costs have continued to go up since what I've been involved with, but, you know, and as Richard said, until you get to the point where you get bid, sometimes you really don't know because of the renovation and because of the creep that's involved and things that you find that you didn't anticipate, you know, in terms of trying to go from what you have to build what you want. And, you know, it's just part of it, but it is a ballpark figure that is something I think would be a minimum. But I mean, that's kind of where we were a year and six months ago anyway, just looking at what we can do to get by as a minimum.
What would the plan be in the event that these three metal buildings that are connected at Pecan cannot be brought up to code?
You know, and then that's when we have to come back and have a conversation with the council. You know, the biggest challenge we got talking about, you know, there's no doubt that there's a certain advantage to the location of the current facility because it's right on Section Street. It's very prominent, everybody knows where it is. You hate to shift away from there and, but the problem is, is what do you do if you're forced to renovate that building and expand it? Well, it's hard to work in a building that's under heavy renovation. I mean, and so that was the beauty about, you know, looking at least this option is that if you got finished office space, that you could then move people and get the pressure off to look at the South Section Street facility about what the future of it is and whether it's a tear down and replaced in the future or something of that nature. You know, we still discussed that, you know, purchasing as in total could end up in that facility. IT could stay there and it could be those services that don't have the direct citizen interactions and, you know, but still be contained within the same campus area. You know, there's, nothing is completely decided stone because you're absolutely right. The first thing that we'd have to do is do an assessment of that building, have a structural engineer come in and tell us can it reasonably be brought to code? And the good news is the engineered metal manufacturers of those buildings will have the information that we need for them to compare it to modern wind loading and loading and see how it performs, so. But I do not, I suspect that there would have to be some beefing up of certain components in there. I just expect that and, you know, and it may be just as adding additional struts or cable bracing or moment frames and probably, you know, going in and adding fasteners to roof decking and wall panels and things like that to meet current wind code. Because that's the biggest change is what those envelopes were designed to stand when that building was built. Mr. Bowman, what do you think, 70s?
Oh boy. It's been there since I was a little B-boy.
It doesn't meet wind code, does it?
Probably go across the street looking at it all the time. Yeah, it's been there.
I think it's just a good opportunity without messing with anybody else's space right now to invest some money into this asset, making it a flexible space, which is what you would do with, there's just some really interesting things you can do with cubicles now. They're not your typical, you know, cubicles that we're picturing on the show, offices or whatever. But then it also has a lot of room to grow and that's the main thing is we don't really want to invest anything unless there's room to grow and consolidating a lot of these departments and keeping them collaborative together, I just really think it's going to be a lot more efficient.
And Richard, I wouldn't hold you to it because I know you said it was just a guess, but 10,000 square feet, roughly $2 million, just throwing a number out there to renovate that full amount. I mean, what would it cost to build something from scratch, 10,000 square feet, $2 million? That's $200 a foot.
Plus?
Plus. Two, three million?
That's the challenge and I think that Mr. Brown probably agree with this is that the tendency is when you do new spaces, then it's new desk and new furniture and things like that and that can be very expensive as well. I mean, so, you know, I think that whatever route we end up going is that we as representing you is going to have to be strict about the budget and if, you know, if there's got to be value engineering or cost considerations, we have to be conscientious of that. And I think one of the things, we've already kind of, we're at least trying to get, to define what would a feasibility for this building be, meaning when I say feasibility, having a structural engineer, architect look at it and come back with, yes, it could be brought up to current code, but this is just the cost of that and then what they thought the renovation for the interior space. The beauty about the office part of that building right now is that every internal wall in there is non-load bearing. It's built inside a building, so, you know, you could literally go in there with a skid steer and plow it all out and start again if the actual structure envelope is made to code.
And that is the idea, is to, you know, take what we can and keep it, but to really open it up, so, you know, disguise the limit as far as what can be done.
Any more question, Nina? I'll let Richard dive into the budget, so, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Has everybody had a chance to look at the budget? Well, and you know, the fact of the matter is, we do have a lot of work to do. I mean, I don't think there's any denying that. If you spent the year and a half that I've spent trying to assess, you know, how to provide capacity in places south and provide capacity in places east and looking at north and the utilities, it's getting to the point where we second-guess ourselves sometime as to, well, is that, should we be serving that next development? But it always comes back to the fact that, well, we invested in this wastewater plant and it's about at 55% capacity and if you want to serve and build the capacity in the plant that is designed to handle, you need to try to capture the customer base that becomes available to you next to the system you have. I mean, and that's just the best way I know to try to promote customer growth. We're not looking to stretch out and, you know, and I'm not saying they didn't at one time. County Road 1 is a part of the system we could probably do without, to be honest with you, but we have it and we're going to take advantage of having it. But, you know, we're just looking to make sure what we have with the immediate growth adjacent to the system is something we can cover. We started this process with Phase 1 and I don't know if we'll get on, but there is a PowerPoint and I don't know if you all were able to get all that, but this is a five-year plan that kind of breaks down it by departments. And I think it's loaded up on the screen, but, and Jeff, where's the?
This is also in the budget book.
And if you do have any questions, hopefully Terry and Jay and Jeremy are in the audience somewhere and they can help with specific items of the budget, but as far as the overview of the, and keep in mind too that, you know, back in March, when I presented about a $20 million, three-year plan, you know, the big difference is with a $30 million, five-year plan, we're coming to realize that we need to beef up our water production and when you start beefing up water production and when you look at, you know, what we have out there now, we've got a lot of eight-inch lines, we've got a lot of six-inch lines and when you start trying to connect an eight-inch line to a six-inch line to grow, it doesn't make really any sense to do that and we need to beef up all of those transmission capabilities so that all these plants can work together. But anyway, when you look at the five-year plan for the wastewater transmission rehabilitation work, and these are estimates and, you know, it looks like the $2 million, don't quote me on these numbers, but when you start looking at what we have in front of us, you know, the numbers aren't necessarily pulled out of the air, but they're made with best educated guesses that are available at this time. So we're looking at 6.8 in wastewater, water supply and transmission. We're looking at 6.2, the gas modeling, the cast iron replacement, we're hovering in the $5 million range and what we found out with the cast iron gas main is there are some unprotected steel lines that extend from those and with unprotected steel, you're going to have to replace those with plastic too, so we're not sure. We haven't identified when we get to the mapping part of the gas modeling or the gas rehabilitation work, we'll be able to better identify all of those lines and what our real exposure is there. And the electric substation upgrades, they're going to bid the equipment in October and we're trying to get the one site for the combined substation at Nichols and Young. There is an added cost embedded in these numbers that would give us some room to move the Fairup Substation to the north and get it away from the plant and allow us the room to add two additional circuits to that. I think you've all seen an email from Lance Junkin that describes what the current load is on some of those circuits leaving the Fairup Avenue Station and the benefit to having those split up. There's also some switching capability that we can implement in places to try to mitigate some of those costs on the short term and I think AMEA even has a program that can reimburse us for some of that cost that we're going to be looking into pretty shortly too, but, and then of course, we're still looking at the facility upgrade that Richard just described on the Pecan Street building. So the five-year commitment we're looking at is, you know, just over $30 million. When you look at the wastewater projects for Phase 1, you know, we're looking at October 18 through December of 19 and Phase 1, we've got the Church Street Outfall that will basically be from the wastewater plant, south on Church Street to Fells.
I just want to interject real quick because I had this question, that this does not include the $10 million for the rehabilitation of the sewer. This is in addition to.
So 40 million total, 41 million total.
Well, the $10 million the mayor's talking about would be the BP money that we're talking about, but.
That's for rehabilitation.
Yeah, total project cost, yeah. There's not much rehabilitation in here, although we are with the camera truck and with the capability to smoke test and assess inflow issues, we are addressing the issues that we find with some of the lift stations that ran with two pumps and pumped into the next basin that ran with two pumps. And so we're looking to find the low hanging fruit of the inflow conditions that caused us most of our problems over the last Tuesday and Wednesday from the Tropical Storm Gordon. But then you get to the Bayou Drive, Fairwood Boulevard, Fairup Avenue downfall line and that's, both of those two Phase 1 projects are in the design phase at this point. They've got surveyors out in the right of ways and we're sharing our maps with them and part of those projects was to extend what the termination of these projects would do to get us out of town and then look at what parts of the system feed into there and what upgrades we would need going further out and then the Bayou Drive, Fairwood and Fairup Avenue downfall, the transmission line, we would be going east and I would envision in that system, we would have a pretty large force main that would come under Greeno Road and continue east on Fairup Avenue or on Gafer and we would try to capture some of the lift stations that currently are pumping from three or four other lift stations and upgrade those to where we can get them and bypass the Dog House Lift Station, so we don't have to worry about upgrading that so much and we can continue feeding the flows that we're generating on Twin Beach Road into the Dog House system. But we would separate Fairup Avenue and the undeveloped property that you look at going 104 all the way to the Catholic High School. You know, we're looking at this, a pretty big project that was proposed near the Verandas that backed off now and they're not part of the plan at this point in time, but there's another project on 104 that would like obviously our service and then we have a lot of vacant property in between and even on 181 and Fairup Avenue, there's vacant property there that could potentially be some pretty good development. And I think we just have to be prepared to serve it and part of that, we will take some incremental steps with the first project on 104, we're looking We're looking at running about three-fourths of a mile of a force main that would bypass three subdivisions that currently pump into eventually what is the intermediate school lift station. And so, if we can get past the three, Country Woods, Gaffer Court, and I can't tell you the subdivision on Gaffer Avenue closer to Bishop Road, but if we can get out of those subdivisions and out of those lift stations working for the new development coming in, we'll be in a better position to create more long-term service capability with these force main extensions we're talking about. And then we would go on out to Fairup Avenue and potentially Lawrence Road with a backbone of a force system. We'll take the Thompson Hall Lift Station, which currently serves all of River Bend behind Walmart and Quail Creek and Firethorn. We would try to split that up into where some of that load is then transitioned over to this force main. But as we continue to grow, we want to keep the redundancy that we have available so that if we do have problems somewhere, we have more than one route that these sewers can flow and still make it to the plant without interruption. So, that's the goal on kind of like the northern and eastern side. The, when you get to the Church Street Outfall, we would be looking at extending that, what looks to be a 16-inch force main. We'd probably extend it on to Boone Lane and Kirkman, I think, is the combination streets that come out to section. And then we would extend that force main. And right now, I'm thinking the most opportunistic place to set up a new lift station to replace the current work, that the South Section Lift Station would be, would be in the parking lot between Public Works and Haven. And then where that privacy fence is, we can back it up and create more parking further off the street and have a pretty major lift station installed right there between those two buildings. I think it'll be minimal effort in terms of infrastructure, you know, adjustments. But what we would be able to do then is utilize South Section Lift Station as a backup lift station too, in some cases for what we would be putting in that would capture everything that would be coming from County Road One, the Grand Hotel, Twin Beach, and then all the way down 32 to Newton and the airport and Roar and everything coming up South Section. And I think that is our Phase Two plan going out that direction. We haven't identified all the lift stations that we'll be upgrading. And when I say upgrade, we're not necessarily talking about replacing the lift station, but we're talking about if the current situation is that this subdivision will pump from where it is to the next subdivision over, well, it's not pumping against a lot of head pressure because it's not very far for that wastewater to travel. But if you're going to put it into a collector force main, that's going to pump all the way to the plant, then you're probably going to pump against a little bit more pressure than what it was designed to pump against. So, we'll be upgrading the pumping capacity in terms of pressure that it can put into the system versus capacity in terms of volume it can pump. Because we'll be taking load off of it. But what we won't be doing is changing the dynamic of the pumping capacity where it can pump against the higher pressure. Although, if the pump curve works out just right, it may be by taking some of the load off and making it pump a little bit higher pressure, it pumps enough to satisfy the demand for what it's serving. And, but each one of those will just have to be looked at. And when I say that, there are 70 some lift stations and to look at each one of those as it may affect having other lift stations pump into it, it takes some time. And one of the problems we had with the tropical storm Gordon at Fairfield, we're finding there's a pump station near the middle school that we can extend that force main and bypass the Fairfield Lift Station altogether and put it in the gravity system going down Reno Road. And so, we think that's a pretty quick fix and that may involve a half a mile, a six-inch force main. But that's something that we need to be able to have the capability in-house to do. And it's something that we need to be able to just, I don't want to get into the procurement process and I don't want to get into how all these things work out, but it can be made so much easier to work within the people in the department and the purchasing system that we have and commit to doing a project like that without jumping through all the procurement policies that we have. And I'm not saying they're wrong, I'm just saying that it could be easier and much more efficient. And we need to try to work on that.
I just think it's an opportunity for us to look at this procurement process in a way that we look at what the state requires and then what we require, really what the feds require, because a lot of our local processes conflict with federal laws as well, which we're.
Right. And some of those things will be where we have most of it in inventory anyway. You know, we should have, you know, a couple hundred feet of pipe, no matter what. And we should, and to get, you know, if we're going to run 1,000 feet of pipe, it doesn't take that long to order, it doesn't take that long to have it delivered. And we would get prices from everybody that would provide it to us. It's not like we're trying to circumvent anything. We just want to know that we have, that everybody has confidence in each other to make these decisions and move when we have, whether it be a developer about to put something else online or whether it be a question of whether that capacity will affect a lift station that seems to have a high INI issue that we need to address and prevent overflows from occurring at that location because of that INI. You know, and we do need to work on that. We need, the SCADA system needs to be, and right now, we've got SCADA alarms for high water and power failure. And there are capabilities that we can add to that SCADA system that will give us pump runtimes and specifically be able to give you the gallons per minute that that pump station will pump on each cycle. And if we can capture that flow rate, and we notice that flow rate diminishes over some period of time, then there's either issues with the impeller being worn or rags have gotten caught up in the impeller and have caused it to lose capacity. And, you know, if you're just looking at alarms and you're not looking at the total picture, you don't think there's any problems until there's a problem. And the whole part of trying to grow the SCADA system to where it not only serves the purpose of giving you alarms for issues, but it helps you with maintenance alarms that you can prevent more expensive repair down the road by having those available. And we need to continue to build that capability within the SCADA system. But, and those are what would be, I would consider costs that aren't part of the capital improvement project, those are costs that should be just be part of the normal budget. And I think there are some SCADA budget items in the budget. But, you know, when you're starting, this is, the Phase Three, you know, gets into the north section and the lift station and pump capacity and wet well volume there. And we may need to have a new force main from the lift station to the outfall of Bayou Drive there on the north section. The miscellaneous upgrades at Thompson Hall I mentioned, the Grand Hotel, we had put a standby pump there ready and that ran all three pumps all night. And we didn't have to crank up the emergency pump, but we were prepared to. And the same thing with Thompson Hall, we wound up not having the pump. And, you know, I will compliment all the operators and, but they hung in there all night and we had issues down south, we had issues north, and then, you know, they responded with knowledge and it was a good experience for me to get more of an understanding of how those things work in those emergency conditions. And they did a great job. I just hate that that last squall that came through about 3:30 in the morning with saturated ground and a full wastewater system caused us some significant problems. And we're trying to identify where those came from and how we can fix them. But that's the wastewater improvement summary there, you can see the numbers. And then when you get to the water projects, we're looking at getting our mapping system updated so that we can apply some models to it. We've got the aquifer study going on the, on the production facility at County Road 33. We look to try to find where our production limits are there and look at a production facility. We, the current water main at the County Road 33, I think is an eight-inch line. And, you know, right now, the plant, the production facility operates based on the tank being full when it shuts the plant off or as it gets down to some level. And I'm not certain what that level is, but it'll turn the production facility back on. When we develop the production facility with its full capacity, we'll need to put an altitude valve on that tank and that plant will need to run, because it'll be pumping more water and it'll fill the tank up faster. But we need to be able to feed the other tanks in town and we need to be able to feed the distribution system without having to put too much pressure on the system to get it to push through that small line. And that's where these transmission upgrades come in. It allows us to balance the production capabilities that we have and none of them are held hostage by the tank that is sitting on site. When it's full, they can't do any more production unless we manually override that capability. And, you know, and that's where the SCADA system improvements come in, where they can all be aware of the condition of the other ones in terms of these production facilities. And when, if there's a water main broken somewhere and pressure falls on one end, well, the other ends can help supplement it sooner than later. Instead of playing catch-up, they're trying to keep and maintain that flow. So, that's where all of that comes into play. Now, the million dollars that we're using to paint this tank is in this budget because it's not, it's been budgeted, it's just not been spent yet. And one thing in our favor, and the projects, of course, haven't gone well at all, but the one thing that's in our favor is that they haven't submitted any pay requests in the whole time. And even though they're only 15, 20% complete, we do hold all the money. And that's at least, you know, something we're not going to have to argue with them about as we move forward with what the value, you know, worked to date. And hopefully, that'll all work out sooner rather than later. And the gas system, I mean, the next slide is showing the projection for the cast iron gas replacement. And then we do have some modeling up front. And we do have a few low-pressure systems, Rock Creek being one that we, once we get on the model, we'll have a better idea about maybe ways to reinforce it at different parts of that system. And then we'll also be able to tell the high-pressure side. And just so you know, in 31, they were relocating the gas line on 31 in Spanish Fort. And if they were to sever that line, our system has two lines coming down from 31, one down 181 and one down scenic 98. And if we were to have to bypass that or phase in the retirement of that line on 31, we would have been able to take that model and look at the pressure that we would have by feeding it all the way from 31, south on 181, all the way to Fairup and then all the way back up scenic highway 98 to get to Daphne. And we have some significant load in there. And, you know, the tabletop analysis I did showed we'd probably lose 50 pounds at a summer low-flow rate. We probably wouldn't be able to do that during the winter peak flow rate. And so, those are the things that the model will give you an opportunity to look at, well, should we look at some loop lines in there to supplement that feed coming back if we happen to lose that line? Because that's, that's where the benefit of the model can help in terms of where you need, you know, some areas of the system to be shored up through additional work. But the cast iron gas main replacement is the big item there. The electrical projects are in here, the substation upgrades. We do have a few circuits when we start looking at the portico on Fairup Avenue, you know, just on the east side of Brown Street. And when you look at Judge Reed and what he's doing on Church and Magnolia, you start looking at these circuits and, you know, we're going to have to be able to, just like in the sewer and just like in the water, if we have a demand in a location, we need to make sure that our system is capable of providing that service. And so, we're thinking that there will be a couple of system upgrades in terms of circuitry in the electric as we go through this process and development. The cash flow requirement, I broke it down into department on a fiscal year basis, that's the last slide. I mean, I'll give up on trying to keep up with it on the screen, but there are a couple of extra hard copies if anybody'd like that. But, and I think that's an appropriate plan, if you will.
I was just going to summarize real quick too, just to kind of put it in perspective, that really that all of this monetarily wise is the same as the 2018 budget, but you added water projects, which kind of makes up that difference. And then really realistically putting it on a timeframe, knowing how long it takes to get things procured and started. And also looking at the time of year of when these things can actually be done, because there's a lot of months that we can't do these things for various reasons. So, that's why it's kind of spread out now over five years, but it gives you, you know, somewhat of an estimate of what one year looks like. And the first year really isn't a huge amount. It's getting into the second year really that it's going to be the most expensive. But at least it's an amount that we can work with and say, well, we know this is probably what we're going to need to spend in all utilities. And it helps us to at least move forward in that direction and get all of these projects started.
Right. And I mean, that's my best judgment on what we need to do. And, you know, I've got 30 years in the utility business, design, managing, and I can't find anybody that would argue any of these projects in terms of the condition of the system we have and the potential for the growth that we should expect to serve. And so, I don't think that's a question. I do think we need to evaluate our goals for where this utility wants to be. I mean, my goals would be set to where we do have a facility we can be proud of, we do have a system that doesn't require reaction every time you turn around to things that have been neglected, if you will. And, you know, maybe my goals are higher than my expectation is more than what y'all's are for what we want. But we need to talk about that. We need to decide if we want to continue to do the same reaction type efforts that we've done over the past, what, 15, 20 years, as best I can tell. And we just need to have a goal that we can shoot for. Personnel-wise, we've got some dedicated operators and we've lost recently one operator in the wastewater department, an assistant plant operator, to a neighboring utility for more money. We had a retiree, and Mayor mentioned Johnny Keller, he had 27 years' experience and knew the system like the back of his hand and would do anything you wanted him to do. But he hadn't gotten a raise in three years because he was top of his salary bracket. And there's got to be a better way to treat people than that. We've just got to be better than that. And then last week, we lost a lineman to a neighboring utility because he can get more money. And the other part of it is the work and the stress, and I know you don't recognize this, but it is stressful to have to work to react and to not know where the next issue is going to come from and try to be prepared for that and work late. We had some water leaks and a string of issues that the operators worked mostly through the night and then would come back in. I mean, it wears them out. And we just have to recognize that. We need, we need more depth. We need more capability. We, you know, I have an organization chart that may be next, but, I mean, when you look at the requirements for the regulatory. at the requirements for the regulatory upkeep of a gas system, I mean, we're struggling to keep up with that. We just need more people. And we need a technical services area that we can work with the planning department better, we can look at capacities, we can permit, you know, what we have going on. And we can manipulate the SCADA system when we need to, we can keep our maps up to date. And we just need that. You know, I don't think this is a mom and pop operation anymore. It's an operation that people depend on. Reliability is becoming a bigger factor with utilities every day. I mean, the quality of power, it's not just having power, but it's the quality of power. You have computers and other equipment that runs, it's sensitive to fluctuations in power. And you say that that's all factored into how you need to manage the system. It's, you know, the tree trimming. We were very lucky. We had two power outages Saturday and Sunday before the storm that were limbs that had fallen on the circuits. And one of them on Summit just north of Magnolia, y'all, I don't know if y'all saw the detour there for a while, but it brought down the telephone line and everything else with it. We had one on Fairup Avenue and that went a little early, that happened to be about 30 minutes before all of them were going to kick off. And I got in the truck and I went out to see if I could help. I did anything I could do to help get the power back on. And it worked out. But I mean, you know, that was with very little wind. But you know, and I don't know what the rest of this hurricane season, but drive around town and look at how many limbs are pretty dang close to the power lines. And I mean, the chances of us surviving without some significant issues is, you know, it's not something you want to put a lot of money on.
Richard, let me just stop for a second and ask if council's got any questions about what Richard's gone over at this, to this point.
I've got several questions, if you don't mind, just for you and for the mayor, just to hit you with a few. What is the surplus from utilities, if you can recall, I don't know off the top of my head, from say 17, 18 and then 16, 17, looking for kind of an average surplus?
Profit from utilities?
Yes.
It's in the budget book, I can pull it up.
Right, I just didn't have it handy, I was thinking y'all might know.
I wanted to, before you start your questions, I wanted to quickly just do this over for you.
Sure.
Look at this over for you a little quick. The wastewater transmission is an estimate that we got back from the August 2017 study that we did right before the moratorium. So this really isn't new news, this is the priorities for the updating of the transmission lines for sewer. The water supply and transmission, that kind of is, it's separated out, but I think that's where the additional is from last year.
That's where most of the additional money from the original.
Right. And then you have the gas modeling and cast iron replacement, we've all known about this forever, it's just a matter of getting it done by the due date. The electric subdivision upgrades is all the things we talked about about a year and a half ago when we had the study from 2016 and we chose to plan to move forward. So all of these things really, except for the water supply and transmission, has already been discussed and approved. And so then you have the additional, you know, facility upgrade, that's what makes up this total. So there really isn't anything new, except that part of the rehabilitation is now going to be paid for out of restore funds. So we can say, what do you want to do, do we want to be reactionary? I don't think we can do anything other than this, you know? I mean, this is not, put a Band-Aid on it, I mean, all of these things we've already discussed in length, these are just things we have to do. You know, and the sooner that we get started, really, I think the less expensive it's going to be. The longer we wait, the longer I think, I just think it becomes more expensive, so.
And I will say the.
Answer to your question.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, good. Perfect. Thank you, Jill.
Ask it again, Jimmy.
Okay, so I'm looking for the surplus or profit, if you will, from utilities combined for maybe 17, 18 and 16, 17. I'm really just trying to, trying to figure out, I have a theory on how to pay for this and I just wanted to.
Before transfers to the general fund or after?
After.
Okay, after for 16, 17, around 4.3 million.
Okay.
And they're projected at 7.9 for this year.
Okay. And that's after transfers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
And that's running a weak manpower.
And it's also, that includes the suggested utility, which is not very much, but that does include the proposed fee increases.
Well, the 7.9 wouldn't, because you're talking about, that's for this year currently.
Oh, I thought you were talking about 2000. You said proposed.
Well, the projected.
And I will say that the rate increase in that ordinance has connection fees that are increased for wastewater, so some of the capital cost would be offset by some of the, and I think there's about $600,000, $700,000, we felt like would be revenue additional with that connection fee in place.
I would like to see us fund this without borrowing too much money, without doing a bond, you know, long-term issue. I think with the kind of surplus or profit we have from utilities, I feel like a $10 million line of credit plus the reserves we have that are available for capital upgrades plus the annual surplus, I think we could fund this without borrowing any more than that. And that would, I think that would get us through. The peak time would be that middle year, 7.5 million, after you've done 12 million the second year, that would be sort of the high watermark right there. And I think you could do that and be done and everything paid for in five to six years without having to stretch this out for long-term. And I know we talked about bond issue early, early on, and I just think we could do this without that.
I don't think we have to borrow money. I mean, you do have to look at kind of our, we have a rainy day fund for the city, we don't have a rainy day fund for our utilities. We're fine right now and we do have cash account balances that we'll go over when we go line by line. And I do think we need to have three months' worth of reserves.
So you said you don't think we need to borrow money or?
No, I don't. But we do want to make sure that we have a reserve in there as well and we can propose, we can go over that when we go over line by line. The cash balances, understand, do really for the first time, because it'll be a full year if the rate increases and fees and things like that are included, this will be the most profitable year for our utilities, conservatively speaking. I mean, we're looking at everything in a conservative way, but we haven't been able to realize the true profit in utilities after we've done this restructure, you know, financially, by separating these, the city and the utilities out. We're going to realize this really for 2019 and it's significant. I mean, it's a significant increase in their profits. And based on that and each year to come, I don't see how there's going to be a need to borrow money.
Well, that's even better than my plan, so.
Well, I like the $10 million line of credit if we have to have it. Once you get these projects started, I mean, you just don't want to have to back up.
I don't think that, you know, now's the time before, you know, rates go up to secure that if you don't use it.
Yeah.
It's not going to cost you anything.
Correct. And the other thought I had, just really saying this for the general public, I think the most important part of this infrastructure package is what's going to be paid for out of the Restore Act funds. That's the part that really addresses the deficiencies in the transmission of the wastewater.
The pollutants going into the bay, yeah.
We're identifying issues, I mean, $10 million is a lot of money and it'll go a long way. But this restoration rehabilitation work is continuous and will continue to do it even after we've exhausted that resource and it'll have to continue to be done because it's just like the picture I showed you with the people lifting the manhole up over and having a rock under the drain. People do that and you don't know about it until you have to deal with it. And but when you can react to that and when you can go do smoke tests, I mean, and things tear up over time. I mean, it's just the nature of the beast.
That's kind of what I was going to get to, add a little more, I guess, gas to your fire.
Thank you.
The, you know, one reason we're in this predicament is we've never had a maintenance program installed on utilities whatsoever. If you're going to spend $30 million over a five-year period, we really need to type it or try to institute some type of maintenance program for all of these utilities so we don't get in the same position.
That's where the personnel can come in.
Right.
And it is the personnel, the SCADA, the technical assistance, all of those things are part of maintenance. Because it's not just while we're doing this for five years, it's the long-term maintenance that's needed with that experience.
Right. And you know, with the mapping and with the work order system tied to it, we'll be able to track sections of the system. We'll be able to know where, you know, right now they have a Band-Aid alley, they call it, on 181 where the water main seems to break a lot. Well, you get enough data that suggests it's going to be better to relocate or replace that line than to keep fixing it. I mean, it's not about just fixing the line, it's about the inconvenience to the customer. And so that's where this asset management feature can help. And it's part of the work order system tied to the map. You know, and we do have, there's nothing but upward, you know, we've got some good things we can build on, we just, upward mobility is what it's all about and getting better every day. And that's what one of my goals would be, is to every day try to find a way to get better. And having more people, having more capability, I think is part of that. I just want to share with y'all my goals so that, you know, there's no mistake that, you know, I think there is a direction that we need to move toward and I'd like to know that we can all agree on that. Because I think it's important to move in that direction with everybody on board and aware of what our ultimate goal is in terms of being able to manage this system without problem.
Any questions?
No, I guess the only other thing was timeframe on that BP money for the Restore Act, just because I do think that's the, and I'm not saying all of this is important, I just think that is the key.
Right, oh, no. That is in bucket three, four, and bucket one, hopefully we'll start getting money on that maybe by the end of the year. Bucket three still has to go through treasury and we are looking at spring of next year. And there's just certain things you can't even start until you get the funds and we're learning that more and more. I know Sherri Lee and Richard Johnson have spent many, many, many hours on how to handle the federal funding for this. So it's great that we're doing this with the rehabilitation, I mean, we couldn't have had a more perfect timing for this. But we cannot spend until the treasury approves it. I do think it's going to happen early in the year. Because bucket one went through first and we were going to try to do them at the same time and there was at least a two-month delay on bucket three going through. So it's right behind that first bucket.
And talking about people leaving for money, Jill and I, when we were first working on the budget, I was hoping we could get a 5% allowance for merit raises. And you know, with everything else, there are some people that try hard, there are some people that you wish could do better. But you know, wanting to take care of these people that we have, I remember, you know, it's one thing to get additional help, but it's another thing to take care of the people you have. They're the ones that have the institutional knowledge of the system and they're the ones that, in a lot of cases, feel like they haven't been able to achieve everything that they would like to achieve for lack of training or lack of, you know, an education opportunity. And we need to be able to offer that. We need to be able to give these operators and people who are dependent on education and exposure to other systems, you know, or exposure to other locations that they can share.
And this problem is all departments. And so the comp study is in this budget. We did cut it from the last budget, there's a reason for that. We really needed to identify what positions we needed in each department as a structure. Getting, you know, the comp study on positions that we might necessarily need anymore or we might need to combine this with more experience. I mean, we really wanted to do that right before we wasted money on the comp study. So that will take care of, you know, that personnel pay grade. But in addition, because I know we need to ramp up, Jill looked at the true cost of living for the last three years. We've been giving cost of living raises, but we haven't increased the pay grade. So when you do that, it, you know, that should be kind of an automatic and just doing that alone will give some people a little bit more opportunity.
Right, and that was submitted in the budget packet, I'm sure that y'all have seen that, but we just kind of looked at the, you know, what the Social Security Administration said and then the Consumer Price Index and took the average between the two. One said four, one said six, we said five. So that's how we came up with that. And that's what I believe the mayor is proposing to increase our pay grades by five percent.
This doesn't affect the budget.
Right.
It's just to take that pay grade up to where it should be, knowing that the correct pay grades will hopefully happen with the comp study.
And that will allow those people who have maxed out at their current pay grade to be able to, you know, get more. Those that have been stuck for, you know, several years.
If you do have any questions, feel free to call. Jay and Terry and Jeremy with water, gas and electric, they'll answer any specific questions as well. And I know, we would like to try to get the budget passed on a pretty good schedule, I'm not begging you yet, but you know, we would appreciate any consideration in that regard.
Thank you, Richard, I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to adjourn the work session at this point. Council, if you've got any committee updates you'd like to give, you can give them during your council comments. We'll adjourn in about five minutes for the regularly scheduled council meeting.